Meeting to order, we will first have a public hearing on solid waste budget and the county budget, but let's begin by pledging a lead.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic where it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, infinite, and just as strong.
Jerel, if you would like to come and address us concerning solid waste. Just a moment. I guess I opened the regular meeting, so if we could close out of that meeting for the public hearing. I acclamation. Thank you. We've now closed. The council meeting temporarily.
I believe the budget was sent to you guys from Tiffany. It passed our board. No major changes or anything. If you guys have any questions?
How's the board? Is you on that? Who's on that?
Our board.
I am. Did your board approve it?
We did. Are there any public comments or questions regarding the solid waste budget? None. Thank you.
All right.
Thank you. Okay, the meeting, public meeting regarding the solid waste budget is now closed, and now we will open a public meeting regarding the Whitley County budget. Is there anyone who would like to speak to the Whitley County budget as was presented publicly?
Tim, I would like to. I'm talking on behalf of the Extension Office. Todd could not be here today. And we sent back budget cuts and met with him yesterday. He has two areas. The main one is travel. With the last two years of COVID, the travel was down, and that's where some of our figures come from on an average. They had that set at $8,000. We moved it down to 3,000. He's pretty confident that they will need that, that whole 8,000. 3,000 probably will not last him a half a year. But it's all basically due to the last two years of COVID, or their numbers would have showed it was up. So he didn't know exactly what we would do with that. Either make him come back for a request later, or go ahead and change that back up to 8,000. And then his other one was bulk mailing, but he said they're going to try real hard to stay within that. And the other four cuts, he said they thought they could stay within. But the main thing was the mileage on theirs.
And the other comments at this point in time? Hearing none, we will close the public hearing on the Whitley County budget. And now we reopen our county council regular meeting. Paula, you are first on our agenda. The chair, so that you'll be more easily heard online.
Paula, we're the director of Whitley County Community Corrections. The packet I sent you, as all of you know, county budget submissions don't always align with grant awards. So this is really just to clean up their appropriations before the end of the year. So Tiffany doesn't have to feel any negatives. Doesn't affect any county general. Tommy did call me about the one, that was a one year. I haven't got the grant award, but it is promising that that's going to be extended by two more years.
Okay.
Thank you for that shape. Now, if you would prefer I don't do this one for the packet next year, you want me to do them, you know, one or two throughout the year, I can do that as well. So just let me know what you prefer.
I mean, you're just moving money from one fund to another. You're not asking for another appropriation or anything.
Well, it's just, it's just increasing appropriation based on what the grant award was actually after that. Because county general, I mean, the county budgets are due in June usually each year. I don't receive my grant awards later in the year, so I don't really know for sure. I'm just projecting what I make it.
So there are six different proposals here in total. Anything that you want to highlight?
Not really. Obviously, we're in a better, I guess, not really meant I comment. Yes, obviously, we're in a position that we can find additional expenses out of project income. Our operating expenses are increasing because our population was much lower when I submitted this budget than what it is today. So we're able to cover those costs through these surveys.
Paula, you think your, this amount is, with all these, is going to use, biggest share your grant?
Oh, yeah. I won't have any carryover of my grants.
I'll make a motion that we approve the additional appropriation request as a whole.
Motion. Do I have a second? Second. Motion in second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor of the motion. Raise your hand. Let the record show it is unanimous. Thank you.
Do you have anything, Paul? Thank you.
The next item on our agenda is the 2023 levy discussion. This is.
We have another additional appropriation.
Yeah, that has been handled. The commissioners are going to pay that, so out of their budget. So it's not necessary for us to respond to it. If you'd like information about that.
I don't know what it is. Yep, yep. We have money in upgrading, what was the line of computer upgrades?
And, and these are transponders that will.
That's a tower that'll sit on this building and the health department, GIS, engineering, they all use it. I don't understand it fully, but Scott might have a better understanding of how that works.
So the engineering department and the health department use a full position equipment to mark things, have drink work, or green, or other things, locate them with the gear synchronous pellets out of space, with their accurate location, right for lights, other system locations, and job. And look for the natural valve, and then, uh, road watch will be done, so that we have an accurate location on our GIS. If you go on the beacon, you can see all these things that are mapped out by people who did that themselves. So, software with that, the harbor bills, however they get that for reasons, and so often.
Thank you. Thank you. Any questions regarding that? Now, the 2023 levy discussion. In prior meetings, we left one levy still at question, and that is the amount to be levied on behalf of the reassessment fund. Was proposed that we make that zero, and there was some discussion regarding whether or not we do that.
Well, I'd like to talk a little bit with Tim. I'd like, I wouldn't like to see that it would be all taken out of the reassessment fund. Think we need to leave a little bit of it in there. I know if we take it all out, we've got to have it paid back. What was it? How many years it's just get that paid back? Do you remember?
Well, you set the levy every year, so she's got two years worth that she would be able to sustain her budget. And then she would be, obviously.
It seems like once we take it all out, then it's, it seems like it's hard to get it all back. I'd just like to see us leave a portion of it in there and and do with it. I'd make a motion that we leave 100 in there, 100,000 in there, and take the rest of it out.
I'll second that. I agree with Kim. I think we need to leave a little in there. I just don't like taking it to zero.
What's that mean when, what's that mean to you when we say a certain amount we're going to leave there? How does that equate for you figuring out what that levy is going to be?
Everything. So we're going to take and leave 100 in there, and the rest will shift up to the county general levy. So it'll add the two.
Done with like a percent of the tax rate? So it's not just a dollar amount that we're talking about?
No, it's a dollar amount. Some are set by dollar amounts and some are set by percentages.
Okay.
And this one is a dollar amount, just like the health department is.
So essentially, this is $100,000 less available from general fund, but it will build the reassessment fund.
It won't, it won't go down too fast?
Yes. Any further discussion? I have a motion in a second. All in favor of the motion to put the reassessment levy at $100,000, raise your right hand. Show. And all opposed, same sign. Show six to one. Thank you. Our next item on the agenda is the solid waste interlocal agreement. Attorney Shipman made some updates to the verbiage pertaining to the penalty for the interlocal agreement. Everything else remains the same. You received that. The commissioners passed this yesterday. Is there any discussion concerning the solid waste interlocal agreement? Hearing none, I would entertain a motion to pass the, to give consent to the solid waste interlocal agreement.
I'll make that motion.
And the motion, do I have a second?
A second.
Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor of the motion, raise your right hand. It shows unanimous, and this only requires the signature of the chair. Highway Department and the engineering office.
Can you describe the director of the highway department? I believe that Jenny and I are just revisiting the discussion on the topic of how the position that the council approved to be split between both the engineering department and the highway department is paid out. And then there is also a discussion where we would like the council's advisement on how the benefits should be paid as such. So since it is a split position, we had a discussion with Tiffany. She took advisement from the council, and they would like us to pay it from both the highway department and the engineering department. So I think we feel that is appropriate to just split that salary down the middle and just pay even half and half for it. But then that does leave the open end of insurance by gun Medicare per.
Longevity.
Longevity.
Cell phone.
So we would just like the council's advisement on how you would feel it would be most appropriate to pay those items. And I suppose approval to be paid from both engineering and the highway department's budgets for salary.
In our last meeting, we approved that it all be spent through engineering after Tiffany checked with State Board of Accounts, because it is a 50-50 position. The position will still be working for the highway department half time. It all involves drains and those issues, but it's two separate responsibilities. So we're asking now that we change the way that that is paid to 50-50 for salary as well as all benefits costs.
That'd probably be the easiest way to do it, wouldn't it? Everything would be instead of going, okay, I only got to do half of this and all this out of the other.
That's a decision up to you guys. So if that's the way you want us to do it, that's how we move forward.
But I think that would make the most sense, wouldn't it? And then that way, you're 50-50, and everybody's paying their fair share. So I'll make a motion. We do everything 50-50 between the highway and the engineering department on salary and benefits. Do you need anything else?
I don't believe so.
Do I have a second?
I'll second.
And I would just note that if we don't do this state board accounts, they'll be asking us to do something different in the future. So.
Do you both anticipate this is pretty much going to be an even split as far as the amount of time at each department?
We really have the, I think, the capability to make that position as evenly split as possible. So we've kind of been working well so far to split the, or split the position and the responsibilities relatively evenly. But we're still keeping track of time in the system and doing those things appropriately as well, so it's all documented.
Any other questions? We have a motion in a second. All in favor of the motion to pay salary and benefits split evenly between the engineering department and the highway department? Raise your right hand. And let the record show that it was unanimous.
And I think that also from last month, there was never a formal vote on the actual salary for the foreman position. We had kind of, you had approved the reclassification of the position itself, as was reclassified approved by WIS, but there was never a formal dollar that was approved for his salary. I think Jen had the numbers for that.
Right, so the motion last month was to improve as presented, and with the recommendation was to pay the. Recommendation was to pay the foreman more. So this determination is new, so maybe how much more? $1,000 more, or I did take the extra five in the base. Midpoint there would be 1,000, 095, if you want to.
Katie, I have a question for you. The new mechanic, you said that going to have to have some schooling or some different certifications. You want to have a top-notch mechanic. So if, how does that fit in with the amount that you're wanting to pay your, you know, somebody above him or below him? I mean, how's that all going to fit? Do you know what you want to offer that mechanic now?
Yes, and we actually did hire a mechanic, and his first day was yesterday. He accepted the position, and when WIS reevaluated the job description, when we added the different qualifications and requirements for education and certifications and such, they did recommend that add a higher pay as well because of those education requirements. And I don't know if I have that one printed out for me, what it was just that.
So is that, you know, and is that more than 60?
No, so it was approved at 57,000, I think it's what, 293? 57, 293 for that position. And it was, it was recommended that they are on the same classification level, but because the foreman is a supervisory role and the head mechanic reports to the foreman, that's why they recommended that that foreman position be paid relatively higher, even though they are classified as LTCI-1, Labor, Trades and Crafts Level 1.
I recognize that this is complicated by the fact that people are already in position. But personally, I would like to see the documentation, to process it, and see what the explanations and reasons are for changing what we already agreed to. But that's just me.
I'd agree, but.
We can always schedule the pay date back to today, yesterday, whatever date we would determine.
That's true, but how's it going to affect putting together the final budget? What's the timeframe that you would need that?
We will adopt on the 4th of October.
Well, actually, it wouldn't matter because it's not an elected position.
And we can change it at any time.
It can be changed at any time.
If anyone wants to take action on it, I would entertain a motion, though.
Is the information that you're requesting, what came back in the report from WIS?
What came back in the report, just an explanation of the numbers. To hear them is one thing, but to see them and the explanation as to why it's different than what was originally proposed, just to physically have it to look at and study would be helpful, rather than making a decision, even though it's just a small amount of money, making the decision without processing it. We're trying not to do that. Entertain a motion to take action or to table.
I'll make a motion that we table until we have the documents in front of us.
I have a motion in a second to table. All in favor of the motion, please raise your right hand. And opposed, the same sign. And that is five to two. Yeah, if you just get that out to us, and we'll take a look at it, and we will act on it. You had another item, Katie, that you sent us yesterday?
I did. I wanted to touch briefly on this, and I do apologize because I am, this is very last minute. We are working with UFI, who's our engineering consultant, on applying for a federal grant, and it's Safe Streets for All. And this is to develop a safety plan that is really inclusive of the entire county. And it's for all roadway users, so not just vehicular traffic, but pedestrians, bicycles. And it kind of takes a look at all of those things. It helps us to identify different areas in the county that may be of concern. It's funding for different studies and things, and help to collaborate between different departments to develop a safety plan. And really, it kind of falls across multiple areas. But we're applying for the grant, and the total project cost is 75,000. And for the federal grant, they do require, obviously, a local match. This letter that I have for you today is, is pretty much just a financial commitment letter that is a general financial commitment letter. It doesn't specify where the funding will come from. It just says that there is $15,000 that will be available in next year's budget year that will be able to accommodate for the local match. This would be appropriate to come from several areas. It could be completely funded by the highway department. It could be funded from, I think, CDIT would be appropriate for that as well. There's a couple of different areas, but it doesn't necessarily have to be specified. And also, this, this letter is not something that is required for the grant, but it is a good supplementary document just to see, so when the grant is reviewed, that they can see that the county is fully supportive of that and commits to paying for their share of.
Questions for Katie regarding the safety group?
So we just need to get it into budget somewhere for '23?
It would be appropriate to either find a location in the budget or with some of the items that we have budgeted for in the highway department's account, that we might be able to fund that as well, the way that it's already set up through one line item or another. It can be something that's requested in the future as well, because it's going to be paid in, I believe, three or four separate quarters. So it's not going to be all upfront. It'll kind of be split into four separate payments. So this basically is, it's not a dedication to a certain account or anything of that nature. It's just saying that, yes, we will have that funding available next year for that grant match.
So we just need to make a commitment that we will fund it.
Yes.
Regardless of where it comes from.
Correct.
And then that grant is due on September.
I believe it's September 15th is when the application is due. And again, this is not a necessary document. It just is something that kind of feeds in our application process. And Beth, I think, is here as well in the back. If you guys have any specific questions, she's been assisting with the grant application.
Then you'll develop the programs that you would use this, this money for?
Yes. So this is, this is the money that would actually go towards the development of, so it goes into all of the different studies. It goes into collaboration efforts. There's a, there's a list of certain things that that particular monies would go towards. And then there's different processes later that, that it would be more of an implementation part of it. But I am also told that this particular grant, if we have a approved safety grant, or approved safety plan, rather, that that actually can make us eligible for different federal grants in the future. So it can kind of be a leg up where different opportunities may arise from that as well.
Have you reached out to the other departments that you had mentioned that might go together with you on this?
Yes.
And how are they responding?
So I did speak with Amy, with EMA, and she wrote a letter of support that's also going to be included as a supplementary document. They obviously cannot contribute anything financially, but she said as far as an in-kind, which is something that the grant also supports, that her department is definitely willing to collaborate in whatever way they can. I have spoke to Mark and Jason with the sheriff's department. We're kind of working through a few of the details on the grant as well. But those are the two main departments as far as public safety that I have contacted about collaborating.
This was brought to the commissioners yesterday. Do you have any comment, Chad?
We just thought it would be most appropriate for council to address this. It's financial commitment. But we did offer a favorable pass.
Make a motion. We make the commitment to support the process of the grant application.
I have a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
A motion in a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor of the motion, raise your right hand. Let the record show that it is unanimous.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Next item on our agenda is the regional sewer district appointment. We received the resignation of Chad Nix. He made a recommendation of an individual. It's our option to follow that or not. But there's also additional information that we need to have. Yesterday, the commissioners approved an inclusion of territory into the Whitley County Regional Sewer and Water District. Essentially, this says that anything that is not in a sewer district or municipality and their sewer system is eligible to be a part of the district. Pieces, areas can be exchanged, put in other sewer districts. Part of that is specific discussion about Troy.
Troy Cedar Lake.
Troy Cedar Lake.
That's an area that Troy Lake Regional Sewer District has had interest in. They're already at Moose Lake, and Troy Cedar is less than a mile away. But it can, it can certainly be traded districts or even given to them. But we voted to expand the district because it also expands the pool of eligible applicants to sit on the board. It doesn't change anything with the, with the projects that have already been identified. It's not, you know, it's not feasible really to expand that sewer to those areas that we added. It's not going to change any projects. Just changes who can be eligible to sit on the board.
The state law changed this last year. And Scott, do you want to address that? Or will you please?
My aspect, did you want me to talk about parts of the law first?
Yeah, because in, in the past, it has been, you have to be in the area.
Right, so when the sewer district was formed, it was advised to the commissioners at the time to only include the areas that we, of the projected projects. We had around twenty to twenty-three areas in the county that we suggested would be areas for sewer, um, simply because of complaints or septic system failures in the past. Uh, the new change is to include all the county except for existing other sewer districts or municipalities. Um, and the only difference would be is that when those other districts or municipalities want to expand into an area that is not the counties, we just have to write an interlocal agreement. And it's something that's pretty much already formed up, signatures, and we go from there. Uh, so it's not a big complication. It's just includes all the, all the people in Whitley County beyond those existing districts. Uh, the state law changed, um, last year, and it may change again this year because there's a lot of movement to change the poorly written legislation last year on the sewer. Prior to the, uh, last change last year, uh, people had to connect to the sewer unless they could be the three, one of the three exemptions in state law. Some of those exemptions have changed, uh, but basically, um, if you have a, a septic system that can be approved by the health department or a qualified inspector, which really isn't named in the code, then the thing can be brought before the sewer board and the sewer board can approve that septic system for extensions of, uh, two, five-year extensions or a ten-year extension up to twenty years, basically. Before, that septic had to be newer than ten years. Now it doesn't. Previous code said that it was three hundred foot to a residence. Uh, our kind of ordinance is three hundred feet to a property line. It's changed now back to the residence, uh, that they have to have a looking septic system on file. So basically, the areas that we identified originally when we made the district in the county, those areas are areas where septic systems are older than usually thirty to forty years. There's lots of failures and complaints, so it's really not going to affect our plans as we've set forth on that. And again, the purpose of the sewer district is not to go out and create more customers, it's to eliminate failing septic system areas and then turn those, that sewer over to the existing municipalities. And that's what we've done, the project that's starting this fall, um, in Westy and Sable Acres, it's another areas that we're taking, we're building that with grant money, completely grant money only, and then turn that back over to the providers themselves at the rate that this current customer already has, which is significantly less than the standard rate for the state of Indiana, which is about a hundred dollars a month, and they're going to be around sixty. So that's a significant improvement, and that's what we're trying to do next year with the commitment from ARP funds and the grant money to do Turbusco South and West, which is the biggest project we have. And that will also be turned over hopefully, and there will be a Turbusco's grant, which is a huge savings for many people. So that's what we plan to do down the road, is work with existing providers, give grant money to eliminate the septic's. The change that the commissioners did, was, again, is only a paperwork change.
And we do not have to have the opportunity to approve or reject it. It has been determined that that is the new district. The impact for today's discussion ultimately is that now anyone who's in the county who's not in another named sewer district is eligible to serve on the board, whereas before you had to be in what would have been a limited district based on the maps that were drawn in preparation for the current project. Would you like to discuss names for nomination at this point in time?
Chad's presentation, he also referenced Nikki Venable for the position on it.
I have a motion that Nikki Venable be appointed to the regional, Whitley County Regional Water and Sewer District. I have a motion and a second. Further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor of the motion, raise your right hand. And let's record. Thank you, each of you who addressed this. And welcome, Nikki. An item that is impactful to the budget, which is on our agenda, is the consideration of whether county commissioners will be eligible for health insurance. Did any of the commissioners want to address that at this time?
I can speak to that. So in two thousand sixteen, a determination was made to, um, drop county council and county commissioners from eligibility. And, um, recently in, uh, our budget hearing back in, in July, it was mentioned that there was, there was consideration about adding commissioners back to the eligibility because commissioners are already eligible for perf and dental and vision. And, um, I think the, the, really the threshold is thirty hours, right? To, to be like considered full-time for insurance. So, um, we, uh, approved in our August, our first meeting in August, I believe, to, um, open up the eligibility again for commissioners. And then, but the way it works is, um, we can't do it alone, so council would have to also approve that.
Do you have anything to say, Commissioner Basinger, regarding this? Sure, please.
Hello, Commissioner Basinger. Um, yes, healthcare has been a topic, um, among commissioners probably over the last year. Currently, none of us hold a full-time job. We've realized that to do the office justice, you cannot work a full-time job and work this job and do all of the duties you have to do. Currently, I'm paying about twelve hundred dollars a month for health insurance for my son and I. I really, really like the office that I'm in, and I would like to keep doing this. I do plan to run again, and it would help very much if I could be included in that. So I don't know if Commissioner Banks has anything to add, but, um, that's, that's where it comes from. So it's just, I personally don't see how I could hold a full-time job and do all of my commissioner duties.
I have can express that concern for over a year. On behalf of our commissioners, this, Mr.'s job is too big to do a full-time job where you have to report hours someplace else and accomplish everything that needs to be done. So I have encouraged this, but it's a decision for the council to make because, and it does impact our budget.
What is the impact? What is the number?
Well, I mean, that's a moving target because oftentimes if we have a new hire, sometimes they don't take it. Oftentimes they don't because their spouse will have insurance somewhere else or, um, there's just outside factors. So I have no idea what the financial impact would be to add one, maybe two people to county health insurance. And Jennifer would know, but each year it, it varies how much we pay.
It is variable because we can approve all three of them, and they can all choose a family plan, and then you have three.
So if all three commissioners were to happen to choose the family plan, um, what's the, what's the number for any individual on the family plan right now?
I don't have.
Sure. For the premiums?
It's nineteen thousand, four hundred seventy-eight dollars and forty cents as of this year.
Thank you, Commissioner.
Okay, thank you.
I will say the reason that we pursued it was because council, I mentioned that. I mean, council initiated it in a budget hearing, so we, we pursued it, but obviously we have approved it on our end, and it's totally up to you all.
And it's appropriate to have a discussion now. We can approve it now, or we can wait and approve it at the budget meeting next month or decline it. So I would like to hear your preferences and rationale.
Well, I'll start. I, I'm not for it. We're looking at twenty thousand roughly, and we've got an increase, I'm assuming, for next year for health insurance. I mean, yeah, for the health insurance. So you're looking at, let's just round it up to twenty thousand times three possibly. That's sixty thousand dollars. We're trying to make our budget match, and we're having a very difficult time. I can't see adding that. It's just not the year for it, I don't believe. Well, I'm not in favor.
And I'll agree with Joan, and, and my question is, the ones that, that are commissioners are running for the job, you know what the job consists of, you know how much time you have to put in, you know there's no health insurance or benefits with it. So now you come to us on a budget year when we're, like Joan said, struggling to get things to, to match up and get there. So I, I, I'm not in favor right now, no.
Thirty hours? That, at thirty hours?
Are we currently, currently using the payroll clock-in, clock-out automated system?
We're using the system, but it's not been pushed that people are to clock in and clock out, no. No county employees clock in except for Paula does have a couple of her staff that use a thumbprint scanner to clock in and clock out. Otherwise, there's no other. But that's why we switched partly for that new system was so we would have a clock in, clock out.
Put that on our agenda for next month.
I mean, nobody's been clocking in and clocking out after that's the reason why we updated to that system? We need to have, yeah, let's put that on our agenda. We need to discuss that because we paid quite a bit of money for that addition.
Any further discussion?
I would like to add that, uh, to the discussion that we pay our commissioners, um, a part-time wage, and we've got commissioners now that are working a full-time job or real close to it. Um, so at one side or the other of it, we're probably going to have to look at, you know, if it's not a benefit increase by providing insurance, are we paying them fairly for a full-time job at, at part-time wages? So I look at this as maybe some sort of an offset for the lowered salary expectation of a full-time position.
Chairman, I'd like to see this topic table for the time being, bring it up at the next meeting so we have time to think on it. And, uh, I'd like to sit down with the commissioners and see really how many of them want it, how many don't.
I have a motion to table, I have a second, it's not eligible for discussion. Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a motion and a second, all in favor of the motion to table, raise your right hand. And let us show that it is unanimous. Thank you. We've added personnel committee just to the standing agenda because we often missed it until late in the meeting. So is there anything you want to bring to us, Jennifer? Any questions? Personnel department or personnel committee? Hearing none, commissioners report, please.
Yeah, really, the only two things that I'm, I'm going to speak to is, um, this past month, we've met with, we've, we've been vetting out IT services. I mentioned recently that I prefer to hit us with a fifteen percent mid-year increase. And, um, in addition to that, we already had like a two or three percent rolling into the year. And, um, there's, there's other concerns, financial concerns with prefer. So, uh, we met with Tri, Tricor and Four EOS. And we are having those two companies come to the next steps, which is meeting with department heads, um, just to, you know, to cure their concerns and, and see what this might look like if, if we were to switch to a different service. Um, so that's, that's going, that's happening now. I think one of them has already come and met with department heads, the other is, is coming this week. Um, the other thing is, uh, a jail funding update, um, the correctional rehab facilities tax, uh, the balance is right now, um, three million, seven hundred eighty-one thousand, six hundred twenty-six dollars and ninety-six cents. And we did get some early estimates from, from YGAND on the project estimate, and, um, the early number shows thirty-eight million, three hundred ninety dollars, or, um, thirty-eight million, three hundred ninety thousand dollars, uh, for the jail project, and that would include soft costs. So, uh, the commissioners have been working closely with, um, some of the members of council, uh, Wheeler and, and Auger Bright, and we've been, um, just thinking outside of the box, trying to be creative on how we might fund that, some, some possible sources for funding. Obviously, we all know that we can, Baker Tilly has advised that we can comfortably bond twenty-five million. There may be opportunity, uh, for some help from places like the redevelopment commission or, um, commitments from, from CDIT. The tax is estimated to generate seven point two million, uh, by the time construction is completed. There's been discussion about a bond renewal, uh, on, on this facility. So just want to let everyone know that we are looking at this and, and trying to think outside of the box how we might, uh, find out, we want to be collaborative with you. Ultimately, we know that, uh, it's, it's council, uh, it's council's, council's burden or cross to carry to figure out how to, uh, pay for this, but we want to come alongside you, uh, because we still stand firm in our belief that this is, uh, an imperative project. This needs to, um, be brought to fruition, it needs to happen. So, um, that's really all I have. Any questions?
No, I'll just comment, Chad, that, uh, as Chad said, you know, we're trying to be creative on this funding and using some cash balances in some accounts, getting legal opinion as, as to the use of that money and that it is proper, and, and it appears that that's coming along favorably, uh, you know, and, and it's good that we're, we're making good progress.
I'm very optimistic, by the way. I, I think we can, I think this is something that we can easily figure out.
Anything else for Commissioner Banks? Thank you, Chad. Previous meeting minutes approval, receive the minutes and have the opportunity to check them, look at them? Do I have a motion to receive the minutes as prepared?
I make a motion, we accept the minutes.
I have a second. Are there any additional corrections, questions, concerns? Hearing none, all in favor of the motion to receive the minutes, raise your right hand and let it show that it was unanimous. Next, our, yeah, count's payable schedule and the payroll schedule that have been prepared by the auditor. Anything you'd like to speak to on these?
Well, just continues on how.
Just continues on how we have been doing, and payroll verified, these are payroll dates, and they are marked separate if it's changed today because of holiday, just like normal.
Have a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
Motion and a second. Any further discussion? All in favor, raise your right hand, and let us show that it was unanimous. The meeting schedule for Whitley County Council has been prepared by the auditor as well.
And again, that was just moving how we have previously, so it can change.
Following our current pattern. There's been previous discussion about alternate meeting times or dates. Anyone want to talk about that, or do you want to move on to the schedule as prepared?
I would reiterate, as I have, I think just about every year, that I think it would be more transparent and more available to the public if we had evening meetings. And I would like for us to have a discussion about implementing our meetings, if not all of them, at least every other month, to accommodate people who can't be here during the daytime that would have interest in being at a council meeting or having input.
I would add that I think every year, I have agreed with Thor that we ought to try that, but I also would note that the commissioners considered the same option in their meeting yesterday, and declined to do that.
Has there ever been a time where council was in the evening? Does anyone know?
Ever is a very long time, so.
A long time. When we had some special meetings years ago on the SDI project and so forth, we had special meetings, and it was going to be a large crowd, we knew it. Actually had it in Circuit Court, we did have some evening meetings then, commissioner and council, but they were especially called meetings.
Yes. This is a point of clarification. Commissioners didn't approve our meeting schedule. We tabled ours until November, and we did have discussion about an alternate evening meeting, and that's still on the table.
Okay, I'm sorry, that is still on the table.
Well, the only thing I can say is that in the evenings, if we have to ask the department head a question, we don't have them here, unless, you know, we pay them to come in. I don't think it's right to, you know, have them come back in town, you know, unless they're getting paid for. So I think, you know, like I told Thor many times, he knows I'm against it. I think during the day, when everybody's here, if we got questions, we can call them in and answer them, but, I mean, I'd be willing to try it a couple of times to see, but as of right now, I'm against it.
And I'm in agreement with you, Cam. We've always, the past year, talked about changing our meeting time. It always goes back to our department employees coming in and have to table things from in, for us to review on. So I'm for the meeting schedule as presented.
Would you like to propose that as a motion?
I make a motion that we leave the schedule for county council the way it is during the day.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Is there further discussion?
Are we voting on leaving it the way it is, or are we voting on this meeting schedule?
We're voting on the meeting schedule.
The only question I have on that meeting schedule, if we're voting on it, is, is July 4th not considered a holiday this year, for the sake of meetings?
Yes, but we are going to be open the 3rd, so commissioners will have their meeting on the 3rd.
They'll have theirs on the 3rd, and they'll have ours on the 5th.
Yes, that's a good question.
Yeah, you made me think.
Are we still open for comments?
Yes.
I would be willing to try a couple nights through that year to see, see what happens. I'm not totally against having a night meeting.
Correct me if I am wrong, but if we were to schedule night meetings and were to find that that did not increase attendance and did create problems just by advertising the changes, we could change back if we're scheduled that. So we're not locked in for a year if it doesn't accomplish our goals.
But could we also pick just one or two eights instead of?
It's your guys' schedule, you can set it however you'd like.
We have a motion on the floor to accept the meeting schedule as it has been presented. We have a second. We need to vote on that motion unless there is further discussion. All in favor of the motion to accept the schedule as presented, raise your right hand. In opposed, name signing, shows four, three, accepted. That completes our prepared agenda. We are at this time ready to receive public comments. Yes. If I may, is this regarding broadband?
Yes, it is.
May I ask you to wait momentarily to see if there are comments about anything else, because I think there will be significant discussion of broadband? Is there public comment on any issue regarding anything except the broadband situation in our county? Hearing none, please proceed.
Good morning. My comments are about the Surf Internet proposal, which you offered last month, and I represent 10,000 residents, which is roughly one-third of the Whitley County residents, according to the 2020 census. The importance and urgency of this topic is so critical that the federal government has allocated $65 billion to rectify this to unserved areas. And at least 100 million of that will initially go to each state. So Indiana has access to $100 billion to help address this issue. And the county, even among the topics this morning, has addressed several things that impact broadband necessity. You're asking your commissioners to work part-time and then expect them to get health insurance on their own from other work. Totally understandable, except that if they're doing that work remotely, they need to have minimum broadband access. And with a third of your county that does not have that right now, you're really limiting the people that can apply for these positions in the future, because they cannot do that work from home. That's just one example. Also, if you're looking at the schedule of your meetings, and I noticed that you've got these recorded and available on YouTube, how can your residents watch them if they don't have the basic ability to download at that wavelength? It's just not possible. I haven't been able to watch the replay from last month at home. So what I thought for you this morning, because I know that numbers matter and you like to process things, there's several support letters here. And if I need additional copies, I can send this by email. They go through several examples from different residents about their background, and why this is so important. I would really like to impress upon the council the urgency to bring up the Surf Internet proposal again, and discuss what may be the letting this from the community vote, and how we can support this. Surf is a local business. They are absolutely ready and willing to serve the entire community. They've stated this publicly. I, right now, don't have any other options to meet broadband requirements. I cannot get the minimum at my house. I've tried at least 10 different providers at a cost of over $2,000 for me personally, just with broadband. It's absolutely unacceptable, and I know I'm not the only one. I would really encourage you to support this local business that has invested their own private money in it and is forward with it. Also, just as a reference, Mount Kilimanjaro and Mount Everest already have broadband access. Mount Everest has had it five or six since 2017. There's no reason why Whitley County can't do the same. Thank you, appreciate it.
Thank you. Floor is open if there's another public comment to be made.
Difficult to follow that. Especially, I'm Jay Fall, where I'm a proud resident of Willie County. I've lived in surrounding counties. I'm a physician, but what I have seen in the past few years is a deteriorating internet service for us. And since the COVID restrictions, much of our healthcare is delivered by video. Most of you will be receiving video-based healthcare in years. If you have a cold, you shouldn't be going to the doctor's office, you can just go by video and interact with your clinician by video. And that's how we predominantly work, interact with patients. I can't do that from my home. I have to drive 30 minutes into Fort Wayne to be able to move in an office to get video because our internet service in Willie County area is so poor. It's a bad perspective for our county, because people know I'm from Whitley County, so they perceive that I'm from this big county where we don't have adequate internet. When I'm on the internet from home, when they have an evening meeting, it's spotty, it's coming in and off, I'm freezing up, and they say, oh, you must be from home, because you're in Willie County. So I think it's a bad image for our county in general to have. But it's a public safety issue. We need to have strong internet to be able to interact, not only for healthcare, but in running business in general. That's what the expectation is. We're on a desolate island of pockets of poor internet in Willie County. That's how we're expected to operate our businesses nowadays. So this is something that, it's a public utilities issue. It's like running electricity to homes. And it wasn't so much of an issue in 2013, and we moved to Willie County, it is now. Thank you very much for your service.
Thank you. Anyone else like to speak?
I'm a five-generation, at least, and was with my great-great-grandmother dancing with dogs on Friday late. I had the opportunity to move wherever I wanted in the country doing broadband. I stayed in a company, took away for one year, decided I now like it, sold the house on the lake. Community, a big thing for me. Or was actually one of my coaches. There, with the companies I've worked for, I've seen broadband issues firsthand. I've been in, when COVID happened, there was multiple 80, 70-year-olds in homes that I was in. Some of those people did not see their brother or sister, I don't know. I personally witnessed people cry when I was able to spend the next 10 minutes to teach them how to do it. And I was actually up there, but I got a phone call afterwards. One lady in particular was able to have the last 10 minutes of, as way of all the business, private internet, to be able to take like some calls, like the doctor. Whitley County is the only county around here that is not doing something. I am working with multiple counties. For me, particularly, my son's having a huge problem with his school. School provided Jeff Act, so those people were very low where we were at. Internet would come, drop, work for five minutes, well, then enter this homework. So then you have to restart. I don't know how many of your parents, but if you've ever done homework with kids, it's really hard, especially when they're 10-year-old, nine-year-old, five-year-old. Could you imagine doing homework now without internet, and all it is is the learning? Those kids are either falling behind, or you're struggling as a parent to try and teach your kid it for four hours, doing something that should only take three minutes. Actually, my family has a trucking business, and we're actually out on 1050, northwest of the town. We have cameras up, but our internet's so shoddy that we can't tell if anybody's coming in, breaking in. The only thing we have cameras for is to be able to come in and we've got something stolen. I mean, a semi is probably half a million, quarter of a million dollars. That's my damage, that's the lengthy investment. I don't know if you get it dealt with insurance. It's not a quick turnaround. So every week that trucks off the road is $15,000, it's not bad. I got into telco to do what I'm doing now, create a mountain business, and I'm trying to help communities like we have here, and help the elderly generation, our future generation, to be able to take time and, I'm 10 years behind on the broadband stuff. All that does is decrease our community growth that hurts our children. And then it's not your best generation that hurts, it's my generation, my son's generation. They don't need to be behind digitally, and they, if they're like me, they're going to want to come and stay in their community, but the way the world's going, it's all going to be online. Half of our jobs are going to be online. Nobody would have gone to see a physician 10 years ago, you'd be doing online class, or online business. Oh, and it's happening now, it's not happening tomorrow, it's happening now, started happening five years ago. I really would like to see you guys help out the community, and wish for the service.
Thank you.
I live in the timber rich tradition, and I am really dependent on the internet, because not only through hobbies, but other people, I belong to several organizations, we use the internet a lot, and I have a problem with the internet. I have a son that lives in Germany. I'm a hobby photographer, I belong to the photography club. Because of COVID, the last two years, we were unable to meet, so we, our process, by submitting our images to the internet, which was failure. Well, I have a half of magnified internet speed upload, it's not sufficient to send any pictures. So I'm forced to do Fort Wayne constantly, not only with my son, when I travel far with him, and our clubs that I belong to, and photographers thing, and it's impossible. So I suggest that we find a way to improve our situation.
Anyone else like to speak?
My wife, she works from home. We live in, just down the road, we live in East Bay, about 100. And I've been in the county for since 94. At the ILO, at the beginning, that was great, but it was slow. And then we got DCS, Century, and it has had DSL for now for probably 18 years. And there's nothing that has come to our addition that is an improvement. Satellite has trouble with weather, and, you know, she conducts meetings, she's a medical writer for a company out of Pittsburgh, and everything's done on the internet. We've had problems with, you know, conductivity, it's low speed. I'm at like 10 megahertz, megabytes download. That's the fastest that they can get. And when you're talking gigabytes download... And when you're talking gigabytes download, it makes a big difference. All that, so thank you.
Thank you. Share a few rows to speak.
I guess I'd like to come forward. I understand what the community's saying, but I guess we need to talk about numbers. Because I believe that proposal only 700 some households, we're going to get internet served coming in. Also, I'd like to ask, sir, you guys were bought out 2021, were you not? By a company that has assets of over $48 billion. So I don't see why Wiltley County should spend money for an internet service that's going to get no return on their money when a company that has been bought out has a backing of over $48 billion. Everybody says it's a local company. Well, it used to be, but since it's been bought out, they have assets of companies they're invested in at over 160 billion right now. So I don't see where it's Wiltley County taxpayers or free money from our whatever, that we should spend that on a company. If they could provide it for the whole county, I could see it. But we're only going to touch 700 some residents of 30,000 residents in Wiltley County. So just my opinion, it's your guys' vote, but the money invested is not a good return. Thank you.
Yes, sir.
I personally believe that government should serve the people first before anybody else.
Thank you.
I did ask Serf specifically about that because the 770 some is very low. They are only getting that for a portion of the grant. If they get the grant money, they're able to put their own company money into a lot more than that. I believe the proposal from last month stated several thousand. It was in a different slide, but there were at least over 4,000 residents, which doesn't still cover the 10,000 of us that are still under the minimum. My concern as a resident is not whether it's Serf or somebody else, but show me another company that's willing to do this that we can support. I don't see it yet. I've called several and it's, it's all in the letters and I can give you more details if you want. I don't see any other options. I would love there to be competition, I don't see it yet. And I don't see the county making any strides forward in getting us closer. So I am in support of spending taxpayer dollars to get to those of us that are underserved. I would like for it to be different people that have options instead of serving the same people in city limits all the time that now have three, four, five different options. Serve those of us that have none. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Basinger?
Just to respond, the American Rescue Plan Act dollars are not free. It is something that we have to pay back, it's something that our kids and grandkids are going to pay back. There are very minimal things that you can spend this money on, broadband is one of them. Our county is clearly hurting. I do understand that this is not a Band-Aid for the whole county. It's not going to magically overnight make everybody have the best internet ever. We have to start somewhere, we have to start somewhere. We cannot put our heads in the sand anymore. That is what the money is for. It is funds that we did not know that we were going to get. And I do think that it's absolutely appropriate to spend those funds on. Thank you all for coming, I will keep everybody informed.
Is there anyone else who would like to address this matter? You're, you're very welcome. Actually, it would be preferable because of the recording.
Well, hey, my name is Gene, I'm the CEO at Serf and thank you Sheriff for your comments. I just, I just want to let you know that I'm the largest private shareholder in Serf. So while some of you in the room might have pensions and retirement plans, Serf is my retirement plan. And so I'm choosing to make an investment with my capital in Wiltley County because we want to be part of the transformation here. So I get it, we're backed by Bain Capital, they've got deep pockets. I certainly don't. For 20 years, I've run this company on credit cards and my own personal budget. And we brought in Bain to help us fund this growth. So I just wanted to respond to that, that we are local. We have, we employ almost 200 people in the region, making a huge investment in Columbia City, I think you'll see. We did a survey online to see what would, people would be interested in, the 757. We got about 35% response rate on one mail-in, which is incredible. I mean, I would love to get a 35% marketing response on anything. So that tells us that the community really, really desires this. But what I wanted to say in response to what Sarah said is that Indiana just announced $187 million funding for broadband for their Next Level Connect grant. And with your consideration and approval of this grant, Serf will leverage that momentum to apply for a grant from Next Level Connect to do the rest of the county. And the way those grants are considered is they're scored most highly when there's local government participation from you all, there's private dollars from us, and then the rest will come from the state. You take either one of those other two things out and we'll get ranked lower than the rest of the counties, which is why no money has come to Wiltley County before. So with approval of this, we're going to go full bore into trying to complete the rest of the county. You guys have a lot of great things going for you with the RMC, who's going to partner. You got Serf who's willing to put capital in. And so as everyone said, now it's time for the county to step up and put just a little bit of money in and partner with us to get the whole county.
Anyone else?
I have a question for the Chair of Busco. Which is covered by Indiana and Michigan. Is that progress with your negotiations with Indiana and Michigan?
For full attachment?
Yes.
You know, I'm not sure where that is. We just got this
This go as full as that's with? But you don't know where Indiana and Michigan's at, which covers the high proportion of the Chair of Busco.
Yeah, we have an active project funded today. We don't have a project that involves American
Tell me how you're going to go from Columbia City to Chair of Busco and then service the people in Chair of Busco.
Partner with Northeastern RMC. And we plan to use their backbone and then part of the grant, we will find for the Denver area. That's by your standards, you know, there's number of houses sort of north of Columbia City on the way to Chair of Busco that we would service using the grant money from the county. And we would build the rest of the way to Chair of Busco.
Once you get that to Chair of Busco, what happens?
We would want to build out Chair of Busco because it's already served by other providers, doesn't need to be subsidized by grants. So when we specifically applied for this grant with you all, we only targeted areas that would be eligible for federal subsidies under the ARB.
If I may clarify a couple of things. There is not a vote on the agenda today regarding broadband because we do not have a formal proposal from the Board of Commissioners. If you're familiar with the federal ruling process, they have a process called the interim final rule. And the interim final rule changes after public comment and comment by the various agencies that are impacted. At this point in time, the interim final rule, and in fact, they have called it the final rule, requires an ordinance, in our case, from the commissioners with a plan that then must be approved by the council. That plan can then be changed and altered, but the initial step is that the ordinance be prepared by the commissioners, by their attorneys, our attorneys, and brought to us. We are not here standing or failing to vote for or against broadband. We have a legal obligation to follow this process. And I do not intend to throw the commissioners under the bus, just wanted everyone to understand that we have to do it in a certain way. Now, in the past, a couple of projects have been funded, but those were under prior interim final rules. And the rules have continued to change. So as soon as the, our legal department, our attorney brings a proposal that the commissioners are happy with, we will be happy to vote on that proposal. Yes?
I have a couple of clarifying questions on that. Um, how do we as the public know what the next step in that process is? And when can we expect that type of a ruling to be then brought back to the council where we can follow up reporting?
To know, you would have to contact the commissioner's office and see where they are on that process. It may not, to my understanding, it's not yet back from the attorney.
Yeah, so there's a draft ordinance and the county attorney has that draft ordinance, but we have not yet received that, even make a vote on it as commissioners. But as soon as we do, then of course it will go to council for their approval as well.
Yeah, and they will meet two times again before our next council meeting. So hopefully, there's ample opportunity for that to be processed. I do not know what individual council members will vote regarding broadband, but I know that we can't even make that decision. It has to be in the, in the proposal, in the ordinance first. And then from there, we can move forward. And I apologize that it is taking a long time.
I, I think everyone needs to know though, I think, Mark, you brought up a very good point. We do not have a proposal in front of us. We have not seen a written proposal. We've been given a presentation. We don't know what area they were planning on covering, the timeframe of how that would take place, the number of dollars that that would take. We haven't seen any of that. It's all been talked. So, so for that to come to us, and if we don't have a proposal written down and that, we still can't vote on, on a project that we don't know what the true outcome is. I found out the other day that, and I tell me if this is true, that we, the county had given 650,000 or a bunch of money to Mercury Wireless.
Yeah, that was CARES Act funds, that was prior to my term as
Yeah, and, and so what happened to that and?
That was just in 2021.
And did that work? I mean,
It was in 2020.
So there, there are some things that we haven't been, been, I haven't, I'm fairly new on council. But there's not a proposal in front of us, there's a presentation that we listened to and saw, but an actual proposal with true numbers and so forth, we haven't seen that.
So the fastest way procedurally is for, first the commissioners to approve the ordinance. And then make an actual proposal based on the presentation, based on what the commissioners desire. Because we have to vote on the ordinance. And then ultimately, if we want the money spent in a different way, we have to approve any changes. And ultimately, we do have to approve any expenditures. So those two pieces are what we need to do to get to a vote on broadband.
And if we give them the 1.7, is there any guarantee that if this doesn't go through, we get that back for a certain percent? I mean, 1.7, that's a lot of money just to
You're going to split out if we don't, if they don't receive
If they, if they don't, you know, stay up to the contract, if we sign one or whatever, where does that 1.7 go?
Does that broke down in stages as far as amount of money? Like say if you do Columbia City area, it's this amount of money, if you do Thorn Creek, my Tri-Lakes, that's a, or is it all one lump sum and then you work until you use it up?
In, in the other ARF funded projects we've done, it's been progressive being that's based on progress on individual segments. So exactly like you said, we would establish a pay cycle every 30 days. We would submit equipment from fiber optic cable in these areas during this time. Go on, he would, he would pay us that for us, not, not pay ahead. Maybe a little bit of pay ahead to get some inventory because it's a big project, but generally it will be paid.
That's valuable information, should be included in the proposal. One more question?
Yes, very similar to what's been discussed here. I'm curious about accountability for the companies that are already serving the county. Because I'm personally still not served in, these are, is a third of the county. So if you've already put county money into Mercury or CenturyLink or some of these others, what's the accountability factor here that they're actually going to serve the county instead of the same people that just keep having the service already?
And that's why we need to slow down and make sure we find all of that out. My question to Serf is, have you determined, now I'm going off of our presentation that we had, I believe in July, have you determined the number of the, where the area is on the 4,000 that will never be serviced? Because probably the people with the poorest service are going to be included in that 4,000, which is likely myself and Kim.
Me.
So have you determined the area of the 4,000 you told us at that meeting that will never have the service? Is it the people that have come forward? Or what perimeter of the county are those 4,000 people?
What I said in the last presentation was that 4,000 would never be serviced without such a, being such a And it is our intent through the Next Level Connect program to apply for 100% coverage everywhere that's eligible in the county. Now, we don't know how much will be approved, but it is our intent to apply for every single address that, that is And the state doesn't discriminate against like $100,000 to write services versus 1,000. They are just wanting to cover the most of the
I understand that.
So we picked the 757, we have, we have an address list of the actual houses, we contacted every one of them. And we picked them because strategically, they are the best paying for funds. I think I mentioned it before, exactly, but in Wiltley County, those 757 are three times more expensive than our grant funded projects in Elkhart County or in the So that's just the amplify what you all know, which is Wiltley County very rural and very expensive. Those 757 are three times more expensive than the 2,000 that's serving Elkhart and Elkhart County. Other 4,000 are probably three times more expensive than that. But we intend to apply for funds from the state to do them all, to see what they
My other question I would have would be with the push from the governor on broadband and the funds that are coming available or if they already are available, were your plans to do this with those funds initially prior to when we received the money that you're asking for? Were you going to do this anyway?
Only if, I think I mentioned last time, but for us to get a 10 to 12 year return on investment, we materially plan about 1,200,000. Wiltley County, the project we applied for, I think was 6,600,000. So that means basically no private business would ever do that because they'll get their money back at 70, $70 a month. Anyways, so the short answer to your question is no, we wouldn't ever do this without some sort of subsidy. And the reason this is safe timely is because I mentioned a few minutes ago, the state ranks the grant applications based on the partnership between a private entity, the local government, and then the state contribution. And so we're willing to contribute the amount, as I mentioned, like $1,200 per house, which would give us a 10-year return. Then we would ask the state and the county to cover the rest. Because if you approve this or when it gets to you and you approve this, that 1.7 will heavily weigh Wiltley County ahead of the other counties that are not contributing.
What's the, I'm sorry, go ahead and finish.
No, I, I was just going to
So what's the, what's the key, when you say 10 years, what's, how does that make that, where do you pull that number out of? And after that 10 years, are you still going to make money? Or is that when you stop making money or where do you come up with 10 years?
Yeah, that's, that's the internal rate of return based on the current cost of capital and again 6% of the interest rate. And the average customer paying $70 And the average customer paying seventy dollars a month. That costs a lot on average, five hundred dollars to connect from the street to the house. You throw all that into a math equation and says after twenty years, you should start.
After twenty years?
Or ten, sorry, ten.
After ten years, you should, so after ten years, can we be a, can we be a stakeholder? Can you start paying us back the money?
In our, at our PowerPoint presentation, you had also, the first meeting we had, you didn't have a timeframe. And then at the PowerPoint meeting, you summed it up that you would complete this within a five year period. After that five year period, and if you haven't completed, what recourse is there for us? If you haven't completed the five years, which I'm assuming would be put in a contract form. Well, what would that be though? What would that be?
Typically, uh, county require a binding agency to, to.
Anything?
I think that's all my questions.
Thank you for your comments and your participation today. It's always good to see members of the public present. Commissioner, Councilman Barrett.
Yeah, nothing more.
Councilman Western.
The only thing I'd want to say is I just hope we get the proper presentation for SERF. I mean, the public from the last week receiving their letters and postings on Facebook and social media thought it was an immediate thing and it is not, we're not even near it. So there's a misrepresentation going on there to the public. And I apologize for that, which I had nothing to do with. We need to slow down a bit to make sure nothing happens like with the funds that we're not sure what happened to. We need, we're trying to protect the public's funds on that. So there's a lot going on that people aren't aware of. We just need to slow it down a little bit. We want to make sure everything is covered proper. And if it is to be done at this time, I'm in the same boat as everyone else. I have very poor internet. I sometimes have to go in town to use it. So I understand totally. I can sympathize because I deal with it every day. I was without internet for eighteen days this summer. Boy, when you're used to it, that's a shocker. So.
I am currently with Mercury on, it's a radio signal. So depending on how that radio signal is, it's what like megabytes, whatever you want to call it is. On it, this morning there must have been zero because nothing was coming up. And then last night it was seven. So, and he's from the Carabosco area. I have not heard anything from SERF that they don't have reservations with coverage there.
So I guess we just need to, everybody just needs to realize we haven't been given a proper ordinance or plan. We don't have a plan. We just have hearsay.
And Councilman, Councilman Western?
Yes.
Let's just clarify that the proposal is not from SERF. The proposal is from the commissioners based on the SERF information to be legal.
And that's all I have to say. It just needs to be in proper form and we need to make sure we cover all areas. So we don't end up with what might have happened before. So that's all.
If you have a question or comment from the public.
Okay, Lieutenant, it's in the presentation that was given. You made a comment about how this is a good increase property value. In your application.
Yeah.
Um, our values are established for state statutes by legislation. So I'm just wondering how you propose that.
Well, we, so we talk about property values and property.
I'm talking about properties.
We pay property tax. I think that was listening to, we'll, we'll pay a tax based on the. So that, that is the first one property. And then the, well, how would you value, just go online and search for property values increase will be available.
And it's written in our legislative law.
Yeah, I would.
Joan, do you have anything else?
Nope, that's it, thank you.
Thank you, Kim.
I have nothing. Nice discussion.
I have nothing.
And I have nothing, but our auditor has some things.
Um, we just need to have some decisions made on budget. That way I know what to bring forward to you guys to adopt in October for our budget. So I don't know if you want to have discussions on how you would like me to proceed with what was advertised to what you're actually adopting. But I have to have that completed and ready for you to sign October fourth. So I don't know if you want to do that today. If you'd like to set another meeting, we can, you know, advertise it for public. So it would need to be a public medium where you guys actually make votes. So it's up to you as a body, but I need to know where to move forward from here.
And what are the particular?
Um, well, I mean, are we just gonna go as presented with how everybody has presented their budgets? Are you going to do anything for a percent of cost of living? You know, I know there was two new deputies that were proposed in your budgets. Are we accepting those? There were cuts made to department heads. Are we finalizing those cuts? I mean, there's several different pieces.
What's your pleasure? Continue the meeting to discuss those or schedule another meeting?
I thought that was part of our meeting today.
We'll, we'll continue then unless anyone has any concerns. All right, as you look at your budget paperwork, we have a proposed budget and an advertised budget. Proposed budget options indicate three different levels of cost of living or pay increase. Do we have a proposal concerning pay increases for counties that? Maybe let's move on to an easier one and come back to that one.
I'll make a motion that we, um, support in the budget, the cuts that we made last month that you sent back out. There was one that came forward from the four H, um, that we can consider if you all like. But I would say that we move forward with the cuts as we made and have that particular request come back to us if they do need more money for an additional appropriation. So, um, I'll make out my motion on that, on that issue.
Go ahead, a second.
I'll second.
We have motion, a second. And because of my error, Nathan was not here earlier to address this. I told him to be addressed later on. So if you'd like to come now and tell us about your one concern.
I do have, I requested a small change to what was sent as revised proposal. So it's small despite the memo being not small. Looking at it and looking at our, um, past expenditures and what we have coming forward, the proposed supply budget of two thousand dollars, which was that from three thousand as originally proposed. Our annual expenditures on supply have typically exceeded two thousand dollars over the last six years. So I'm suggesting bumping that up by two hundred dollars to right about where our average has been over the last six years. That's the, the most important one because that's a pretty solid average that we've had over again six years. Uh, wanted to note that equipment and program maintenance, we have a couple of contracts that were included uh, that have come up over the last two years that don't really, aren't really reflected in the average that was shown to you. Uh, that's for geopermitting, which is our database, permitting database. And then also go webinar, which is how this is being broadcast today. Uh, since we're a primary user of that, uh, my proposal and the city, because we handle city client mission easy. Uh, it's my proposal to incorporate some of that cost, uh, twenty five hundred dollars per year. Roughly half of that would be covered by the department in order for the, a shared expense with the city. Uh, because again, it's for city expenses too. If it's only paid for by, say, the commissioners, the city wouldn't be reimbursed in that portion. So those two items, and then we also have notice signs that come out of that item as well. Those are reimbursed items. I suggest that we take the reimbursed item and actually put it into its own line item, different series. If we can do that, uh, the auditor's looking into that, uh, so that you can rest assured that it wouldn't be transferred or whatever without your first consideration. So those expenses would be reimbursed by the petitioner. So that's changing around those items. Net, uh, actually net lowering the equipment line item, but shifting some of the expense for those on site signs to a new reimbursable category to better explain what's going on. Also, uh, wanted to, uh, note that the travel and auto maintenance budget, uh, which was reduced down to six thousand dollars. That's a real shot in the dark. Uh, fuel costs, um, we don't know. So I'm willing to take that risk and come back to you for additional appropriations that you just discussed if need be. We do have a hybrid vehicle, which has greatly reduced our fuel consumption, which is great, but if fuel costs keep going up, even though lowered consumption still could be a net increase. And then finally, um, the telephone line item, I'm requesting that that be bumped up from what your proposal was by forty dollars. The original proposal was to have two standard cellphone plans. I understand that maybe that's not the right time to request that. But to cover the one that we have existing plus our existing track phone plan, which is about a hundred and eighty dollars per year. An extra forty dollars should cover that. So, um, the attachment there highlighted are the items that are being changed or that I'm suggesting being changed. The supplies up by two fifty, telephone by forty, uh, equipment and maintenance down by five hundred uh, because of the requested shift to, uh, of the notice signs to a reimbursable category there in the four thousand or five thousand series. So just went relatively small changes, but I really wanted to take a hard look at our budget and, and offer those and just be.
If I understood you correctly, there are some contracted items that are for greater amount than what we budgeted?
The, yes, there are. The actual geopermitting contract is actually larger. Um, when you add the full geo permit contract with the go to webinar contract that exceeds seventy five hundred dollars in the equipment line item. When I started looking at the numbers, I remembered that the geo permit contract is actually split two to one with the health department. So that actually reduces that cost. So I was forgetting that split when I talked to you earlier, but it potentially could.
Are there any of these categories that would be difficult or a real problem if we left them as they are? And you came and asked for an additional as necessary?
The largest one that would be somewhat problematic is just supplies. But again, don't know. Um, we, we run somewhat cyclically trying to, some years we buy a year and a half's worth of, say, envelopes, for example. So sometimes that shows up one year and sometimes it doesn't. So I just don't know. And then equipment, again, I'm suggesting rearranging that for, um, basically better accounting.
Thank you for the additional information.
Sure. Thank you.
Any more questions?
Thank you.
With this additional information, or do you want to in any way amend your motion?
I do not. I just say that I do appreciate Nathan's attention to detail and his thorough vetting of our changes and how they will affect his budget. But I also think there's a very, uh, small enough amount that coming for a additional, um, request is not going to be, um, ever an emergency in any of these situations. So I would say that I'm going to stand with my motion and leave it as is.
We have a motion and a second. Do you want to read the motion?
Um, it was just that we're was in support of the cuts that were sent out to the department heads as presented. Joan seconded.
But we could be adding to if not knowing what we're going to do with the insurance, correct?
Um, I'm not sure if you think Kim is.
You're right.
Any further discussion?
So the last time we discussed, we were still trying to decide which fund we were going to put the sheriff's pension in. Did we decide where that was going to go yet?
That has been moved into the CED for twenty twenty three.
To the CED?
Okay.
And the, the sheriff's requesting two more officers. Was there any presentation?
We need to vote on this motion.
Okay. This, this motion was just for the cuts that were sent out. It's not the totality of the budget.
Everyone understands that. Any further discussion on the cuts? All in favor of the cuts as presented and prepared? Raise your right hand and let it show that it was unanimous. Now let's talk about the deputies.
There was no formal presentation on that, on what it was going to cost for wages or health insurance?
If you remember right, we had to cut that part of it short because we received this, um, spreadsheet from Baker Tilly where it showed that LOIT was going to be in the red. And we kind of halted that. They did start to speak on that at their budget hearing and it kind of was paused. So it has been advertised for the two new deputies, but I know that it just kind of was left.
And is that because the pension will be out of CED? Is that out of the LOIT?
The pension is CED. The deputies would be out of LOIT is where they were in the budget book presented to you guys.
The entire portion of it? Your request for two new deputies, is that entirely out of LOIT? Or is there any out of county general?
Can I ask why, why you need two more deputies?
Yeah. We've been looking just at our coverage, um, and how much time we have to cover overtime days and things like that, especially between April and August are the bad, bad months. Um, we just want to increase what we have and if loads can sustain it without, because we're not putting anything extra into that budget. Um, we're using LOIT and what it's, what it's meant to be for. Um, we need additional coverage and our detective, and the goal is to put another detective on. We've been with, since I came here, we've had one detective. A lot of their times are spent on the, um, child crimes, sex crimes and things like that, which take a lot of time, which also neglects some of the other stuff that comes in as far as the residential stuff, all the thefts and things like that, that the guys are working on the road that they need help on. So the goal is to add one to the road and add one to the detective division with, 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 with two detectives. Better coverage and just helping out the guys. I mean, we get, you get things now where you're arresting somebody for a drunk, even a, a, a toxic driver and you're taking them in. It's going to be an hour, hour and a half before you get them back into service to get them incarcerated. And that's without a warrant or refusal. So crimes are bigger now. We deal with more guns, more dangerous drugs. It takes more time to deal with that stuff. And sometimes we lack in service and it takes us a little bit to get the, um, general service calls than what it should. So, sorry, I wasn't really prepared for this today. I didn't know this was going to happen.
What if there is a problem in the future for LOIT funding all of these positions?
We thought there was going to be a problem this year and I think they came up with it. I don't foresee that, um, this expansion. We haven't added deputy first, so we're here to replace because of leaving. But we haven't added to personnel with, I guess is what I'm trying to say. So I think we're overdue for the amount of people. So I think we're overdue for the amount of people that we serve, the amount of 370 square such miles that we serve, and I think we will respond for it.
But you guys just recently took a position that was a patrol position and put another layer on first shift. So if you get two additional deputies, one's all going to go to detective and one's going to be spread amongst three shifts for additional patrol?
Yes. We shouldn't, on a position like that, no. Our biggest, our biggest, our biggest problem is jail.
Yeah.
Let's try to.
So. Okay. And I would congratulate the sheriff, our chief jailer and the chief deputy on the recent round of recruits for the jail. Do I have a motion?
I, I did go over and talk to Jason and Todd concerning this. One of the questions I had was vehicles, two more people, two more vehicles. And then I also in our discussion asked if scheduling, somehow scheduling can be changed to accommodate rather than more personnel. I mean, we had a good discussion about it and so forth, but I know that some of the other counties go, go a little different way, but just he understands, you know, we talk about cost of benefits for people and, and things like that. So it was, it was a good discussion, but that's something in the future, I think we, we really need to look towards different alternatives than just adding people.
So are you speaking for or against? Want to make a motion? Or is that just informational for the rest?
That's just informational right now.
Does anyone want to make a motion to leave the budget as it is or a motion to delete one or two of these deputies?
I can motion that we have to make an addition of one additional deputy.
Do I have a second?
A second.
Further discussion?
So did Jason say he's got it covered in Loewit already for both of them?
The commissioner's pleasure to cover benefits.
Jason doesn't, Tiffany said.
Yes.
I'm sorry, what?
Yeah, we're going off Baker Tilly.
Yes.
Okay.
So you know that, that information, we were short, we put everything in there and I think between the Mark and Tiffany talk earlier there, we took the pension, we're trying to leave county general with pension and it came back. I don't think the numbers provided early on in the year were very accurate.
They were not, they were.
That had to be reset. That's why the delay came in finishing with things and that's what.
Is there a second?
Kim's.
Any further discussion?
See, I, I guess I'd want to know why one instead of two, if they have that, if the money's there to be covered, John? That's my question.
I, I feel that the detective position is much more important than the other road deputy.
Okay.
Being from the investigation side of the state police law, that is the needed position.
Okay.
So, so I'm clear, your motion is, you said an additional deputy, but the motion would then be to delete one that's our, that's on the budget the way it currently is because it's in there for two. So if we do that, Mark, are you guys going to increase your road patrol or are you going to use the position for detectives?
He's probably going to detective, but that's where we are hurting. You know, we leave the city and that's on each other, we just want to stay.
And, and to answer your thing that you addressed a little bit, it's not just about the money, the salaries being covered out of Loewit as much as it is the vehicles, the insurance.
Right.
The whole, everything that goes with the package, so it's not all covered under Loewit.
Benefits.
Are those two positions in our figures or they need to be?
Yes, that is, as was presented.
Okay.
They're, they're in there, so the motion, this was bringing up the motion, would be actually to delete one of them rather than add one, because they're both already in there.
Well, can I ask Jason a question?
Yes.
Jason, if we do that and just for you to have the detective and hold off on the other deputy, how hard of a hardship is that going to be?
It's going to be great for Lori and to help him.
No, yeah, what kind of hardship is it going to cause only to have that additional instead of both?
If you get more manpower, I'm not going to say it's a hardship anymore. You can't, like, like getting one to two. We, we propose two because it fit in Loewit and it's sustainable.
Okay.
So that's why we wanted one road. Todd was getting the captain position that helped me with a lot of stuff, which is nice, but then also took away from our road. So what we try and do is we try and put in that into road figure, just like today we got somebody sick, we're down to two road people right now with the, with the, I'm paying for off, at the time of the four hour transport, so.
Okay.
It's still going to be a little short, but grateful for anything you know.
Okay. Thank you.
Let me refer back to the discussion that you had with Jim about cars and those other things. Where do you propose that?
We wouldn't, it would be the same in what we do and what we've had in the past, is we try and stay on the same routine of getting the same vehicles. I think between Kami and Tiffany, when we contacted about the budget next year, we haven't increased anything, it's been the same as far as our allowance through vehicles. What we do is maintain that through the year and we basically do a hand-me-down system where the new people will get maybe such as a used car and our senior officers will get replaced with a new vehicle, then we just hand them down.
So there's no?
There may be a time, no, I don't, I don't anticipate buying any extra vehicles this year than anything else would be different than the standard budget. So start buying extra vehicles or coming up with four instead of two, that's not. There's times that we may not have two to sell and that would be because we'll retain those to be perfectly used and not used.
So the motion on the floor is for one additional position for the sheriff's department. If you prefer none or two, you should vote against, but if you prefer one, vote for. Are you ready to take the vote?
Which it's already at two, so you'd be subtracting one.
Yes, subtracting one.
Yes, we're voting for one position.
One additional as opposed to two. All in favor of one additional deputy deleting one from the proposed Loewit budget, raise your right hand. Opposed, same sign.
And I will state I am opposed because I would be in favor of the two. I'm certainly in favor of the one.
And I would say the same is true of me. I would have preferred two, but I'm in favor of one. Thank you. Let me look at your notes.
Just the things we have discussed, judge's supplemental.
Yep.
Which maintenance budget.
The judges included a supplemental in their budget proposal. Do we want to allow that to remain or do we want to delete it? It's part of our discussion that we've not yet settled.
Make a motion that it remains in there.
Current or the new proposed? Because it's currently two and they're asking for three.
It was two last year and asked for three this year and that's what's in our paperwork.
Yes.
That's my motion.
So I have a motion to include the $3,000 judge supplement. Do I have a second?
So you're, we're only actually voting on $1,000.
Correct, for each.
Do I have a second? Motion dies for lack of a second. Do I have an alternative motion?
I'll make a motion, we increase it to 4,000.
The motion to increase the judge's supplement to $4,000 per court. Do I have a second? Motion dies for lack of a second. Do I have an alternative motion? We have a motion to reduce the budget by 1,000 to leave the supplement the same as it was last year.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All in favor of the motion, say aye, raise your right hand and let it show that it was unanimous.
On the maintenance budget, there was two proposed.
Two proposed maintenance budgets. Is Mark, do you want to speak to this or not? You don't have to.
I've been waiting on what they would choose because you have presented two different options, so I don't know if you want to, if they have any questions on it, but nothing's been changed since you were at the budget hearing. No.
One of them's 297, almost 298 and the other is 142. Is that correct, the proposal, option one and two? Option one is, is 297, 950 and option two is 142, 250?
I believe so.
Okay. Which, do we have either one in the budget now?
Are you talking complete budget?
Not, just his, no, his maintenance, I guess, project supplement.
Oh, okay.
The larger amount was included in the advertisement.
And I don't know if that has changed at all because I do know the commissioners were working on getting a grant to cover the museum projects that you had listed, so I don't know if that's something that you would like to speak to them about on that.
All I can say is that Mark and Kami have been working close with Danny in region 3A and I think the grant application is due, it's not been turned in yet, right?
No.
That it's due in maybe October. And we're very optimistic that we'll get the grant, but if not, then these funds would need to be budgeted. I've said about even the, the commissioners' other budgets, that I'm totally fine with coming back and asking for an additional. So if that's what we decide to do here as well, just know, like, keep it on your radar and don't be surprised if we don't get the grant, then we're going to come and we're going to ask for funds.
If we do budget the funds in, into that amount, can that be put back, if you do get your grant, can that be put back into county general then?
They would just not spend it, it would roll over as long as he knew that X, that amount for the 126 for the museum would not be allowed to be spent.
Chad, what would you, what way would you be more comfortable?
Again, I'm totally fine with just coming back and asking for it. So if we don't get the grant funding, we'll just come back and ask for funds and we'll be at university to allocate those funds, but I'm totally fine with that.
But it's work that must be done for the preservation of the building.
Right, I mean, we, admittedly, we just let a lot of our, yeah, I mean, we saw it in the highway department and we have the same issue with the museum and so it's work that has to be done. I would recommend that we, that we not budget for it in hopes that we get the grant and if we don't get the grant, then we'll come back and ask.
The grant's on.
And what's the total anticipated cost of the project?
126. 126 for the museum?
I've got it doing this, if we go up, if we found some additional problems there, which is what I'm working on right now, identifying that.
Mark, is any of this something you got, that your team could sustain, your team could do, the same as some costs on contracting?
The problem is freeing them up to do something like that. I think that is a regular job. Is the capability there? Yes. We're still thin right now, we're barely keeping up.
What are the unexpected findings?
The additional rot and decay underneath the first two rows of shingles. So those are slate shingles, so those need to be removed so we can get a better assessment of what's going to need to be replaced. Previously, we thought it was just on the face.
I'd rather go with option one, if, if the grant's only 50,000 and you, it's going to go up, you're going to come back and ask for 100,000, I'd rather have it budgeted now. That, that's my feeling. I'd rather see it in there now than we know, we're pretty sure it's going to get spent.
He's got, I think, three better than.
Yeah, the option one's 297, 950.
Yeah. And that's what's, I think.
It is advertised as.
Advertised now.
Because he is now allowed overtime, he was lumping that in with part-time, I asked him to separate out what that would be instead of putting it all in.
Option one is the one advertised.
Is the highest.
Okay.
Yes.
Would you like to make a motion?
I'd make, make, make a motion, we stay with option one. I'm sure they're going to use the money.
Of course they would.
Well, but I mean, if, if the grant's only 50,000 and it's going to go up, you found more stuff already, so I'd just leave.
In with a second, Mr. Barry. I would just like to say that I, my observation is that Mark is diligently solving some of the delayed maintenance from prior times and I want to commend you and your team. So we have a motion and a second, is there further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor of the motion, raise your right hand. And opposed, the same sign. Show this five to two.
Thank you, Larry.
And then percentage?
That's all.
Yes, that's all.
Just not one.
Correct, that's all of them, because they all use the same account number.
I'm sorry.
Not percentage.
We need to go back to the cost of living. Three proposals. Yes.
Jennifer Shinaverry, HR Director, I just wanted to remind everyone who did the last list to do an updated salary analysis and I expect to have that back at the latest, the end of October. Unfortunately, we decided a little late in the game to get that any sooner, but I would just ask that we wait till we have that information. I think it'll be good information to have, at least to consider.
We have to pass our budget on October 4th.
Yeah, salary, budget has to be passed, October 1st.
I mean, we were trying to do all of it at one time, yes.
My understanding was that salary did not have to be passed.
It doesn't, it just puts a lot of strain on my office and it's, in the years past, we've waited till very last second and Jan and I were in here doing several hours of overtime trying to get everything done and presented. I mean, I don't think that they're going to come back and give an 11% if that's what WIS says. I mean.
And that's for all employees, you're WIS, you're talking?
Well, WIS was going to, yes, do all employee analysis, they were also wanting to look at elected official salary, they were, I just think it would be, since we paid for that, it would be wise to wait, at least to have that information to consider.
When, when we discussed that and voted on it, it was, we knew it was going to come in late and it would, therefore it was discussed, well, it sure would benefit us the next year to have that on hand so we can watch that.
And that is, that is possible, we could wait and use it next year as well, but my, like I said, my understanding was we didn't have to pass the salary portion of the budget until later, so.
And you are correct, I could leave all salaries as is, as the 5% that was advertised, but it would be nothing more than 5% because that's what council had asked me to advertise for.
I, I would, I would be open to postponing the. postponing the salary part of it until our October 4th meeting. Making this decision then, if you could maybe expedite their return, we'll give you split the difference with you, but I don't want to put pressure on the auditor's office.
Is it better for the auditor's office to pass something and then on the, change the salary ordinance so that you can get the rest of the budget in?
Um, I mean, I can leave the budget as the 5% and if we don't spend it, we don't spend it. But no, I would rather not adopt the salary ordinance and have to make 200 changes. Because that would be 200.
And, and if it was left of that 5%, we're gonna grow our budget.
I mean, yes, it would not give you the numbers that you've been given from Baker Tilly. Those are at the 1, 2 and 3.3%.
So it has been suggested that we work on the numbers for the salary ordinance at the October meeting. So that's, is that a motion to table?
Motion to table.
Do I have a second?
I'll say.
For discussion. All in favor of the motion to table, raise your right hand. And it is unanimous. Yes. And I think Commissioner Banks has some information regarding process for sheriff's salary?
I, I don't, all I know is historically, and Ken, you can correct me if I'm wrong, but historically it's been one member of council and one member of court, which shows that typically negotiate that with the income of sheriff, is that right?
That's who the contract.
That is a negotiation between the fiscal, which is you guys.
So in practice?
Commissioners in that too, isn't it? There's ones in the past years that contractors with.
So. So you're saying that a commissioner can be involved in the discussion, but the decision is ultimately here?
And I, I think, I think the intent was that those two would just go negotiate something that would be presented here. Is that right?
Now, there's a question with that though. Can we, we won't know, know who the next sheriff is until after the November election.
That's correct. It makes it, makes it really tight to get that because I think White was done in a special meeting in December after the first December meeting. With nobody on the ballot, I mean, it's gonna take one vote.
Be prepared.
Drafted but not presented until after it's formally elected? Does that make sense to you, gentlemen and lady?
I thought he had somebody against him. Libertarian?
No.
Okay.
It wouldn't be so rushed if you started it sooner than later.
Okay, do we want to appoint persons?
Mark, was your contract drafted with the commissioners and approved by council?
No, it was drafted, the first one was drafted with Paula Williams and the second was not yet.
But I mean, the commissioners was the body that, and then the council approved it? Their policy, that's all. That's the only reason I was, we're policy.
That would be helpful.
You want those here?
Do you care? Jim or Thor or whoever, Ron might be good.
So you want a motion on a representative now?
I don't want anything. I ask you if you would like to appoint a representative now.
I'd like to point. Councilman Wheeler.
Councilman Wheeler, thank you.
Yeah, you guys say yes or no. You say no, it's.
Yes.
Do we, can we do this by consensus or do you believe we need a motion?
He volunteered.
He volunteered, he said yeah. Thank you.
Thank you, Kim.
Thor, did I ask you if you had anything else?
Big Zabus.
Yeah, you were all the way to Tiffany.
Okay. If there's nothing else, meeting adjourned. Thank you for your extended period of time.
Ken, you've been working on that? Sheriff?
I don't feel it would be a good one for me.
Can I do it?
Sheriff Woodburn?
Yeah.
Thank you.
Okay. Are we off the recording?
Okay.